1:01 on my clock, so I know your time is precious, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the second session of the CTA ESE Joint Study. As per the last negotiated contract, I appreciate everyone being here and thank you for your time. If everyone could just take a brief moment, introduce yourself so that we know who you are. I do want everyone to know that this is being recorded and will be posted on the district website and on YouTube afterwards, so that anyone can watch and see what we're talking about. And my name is Jermaine English, and I am the Manager in Labor Relations.
I'm Lori Barefoot, Manager in Compensation and Employee Information Services.
Hi.
Good morning, everyone. Go ahead.
I'm Kim Thomason, the Principal at Gove Elementary School.
Kevin McCormick, Director of ESE.
Justin Katz, CTA Executive Director.
Gordon Longhopper, CTA President.
Angelina Gillespie-Schmidt, Labor Relations Consultant.
Hi, guys. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Hazel McFarland, I am an ESE Support Facilitator and also a member of CTA.
Hi, guys. David Raffelli, ESE Teacher at Royal Palm School.
Okay, and Caitlin Shaw is also with us. She is the HR Specialist for Labor Relations. She's unable to mute herself and introduce herself because the room she's in would cause a whole bunch of feedback. So she's gonna save all of our ears from that and not unmute herself. We appreciate that. Thank you, Caitlin. So this is our second session. There was some information that was shared with management and CTA in regards to this that was requested from the first session. I'd like to again state that this committee is actually completely full. I am actually not a member of the committee on either side. I'm just here to help facilitate. And that this is a conversation. We are not negotiating anything here at this table. We are having an open conversation back and forth as it pertains to ESE and supplements and their salaries. And Alicia, if you want to unmute yourself really quickly and introduce yourself, well, go ahead and continue from there.
Hi, sorry. I'm Alicia Steiger. I'm the elementary, one of the elementary instructional superintendents for the South Region.
And no reason to apologize. It happens to the best of us. So here we are on a Thursday, and I'm going to turn it over to Kevin McCormick, our Executive Director for ESE and Lori Barefoot Compensation, as they have worked with these numbers.
Okay, I guess I'll start real quick. We followed through with what we had discussed the last time. Lori has done a lot of research looking at structures for other districts like us, some little bigger, some smaller, to be able to kind of compare where we're at and how we compensate and provide additional supplements for our staff who support our SWD subgroups. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lori because I believe, you know, that's what we're really all interested in here today, to be able to review and ask questions and provide feedback. So appreciate everybody's participation in this. And as we go through, just to kind of knowing the work that Lori has done as she presents, if there are questions, let's talk about it because there are aspects, you know, that this document has evolved over time based on the questions and research and clarification that's been needed to get it to this point.
I'm going to try to present here, and you can let me know. Let's see. There we go. That should be it. And tell me if everyone can see this coming up. All good?
Yes.
Okay. Of course, both sides have seen this. I'll just give a quick summary of what's involved. There was a first go-round of the draft materials that I compiled. And one of the focuses was, of course, getting as many of the Florida urbans to provide their data. Not an easy task this time of year, given the complexity of ESE and having to tap into the right people. Just if I can make this a little bigger. I don't know if I can. Let's see. Is that better? Anyway.
Right, one more.
One more?
Yep.
How's that?
Better. Thank you.
Okay. I mean, it's as good as it could get. I will say it's an extraordinary amount of information to facilitate everybody's ability to even digest it, was kind of why I made every effort to really consolidate it into one sheet. So you could see the various categories of where we're looking at your clinical-based ESE jobs, which are the speech-language pathologists, the audiologists, and the occupational and physical therapists on the one side. And then the larger group, which usually involves 15 to 20 titles or more of ESE jobs in each of these organizations. And then kind of a unique job, which it gets met differently, I think, in different districts. But it's the ESE Coordinator, who's really kind of a hands-on side at the schools, for making sure that the compliance is there, that the ESE teachers are getting, you know, the support that they need, ensuring that the school is complying with the directors that come to Kevin's department from the various reporting entities. And then anything that might have been nonspecific to ESE in general that I thought would be useful information for the group. What I did do since the last time I shared these data, if something was applicable to the whole teacher population, I pulled it out. Like, for instance, whatever your, if degree supplements were provided and that sort of thing, if it applied to both ESE and non-ESE teachers, that kind of thought muddied the waters a little bit. I wanted to sort of say, you know, this should hone in for us specifically what the goal of this study and data gathering is. You know, what is unique for the ESE function with respect to the teachers for these various agencies? The last addition that we also had was we were able to get Duval to provide us their information as well. So we removed degree supplements, we added Duval, and then we tried to encapsulize everything in this one sheet. Now, if there's anything, as we go through our discussion today, that we find you need me to elaborate on or we should look at you further, please let me know, and we can have that as an update for our next session. And I'm going to guess that CTA had an opportunity to look at this as well as our district management side. And I'm hoping maybe you've brought questions that I might be able to help with or comments.
Hey, Lori. Not so much a question, but just an observation and kind of some direction as to where we were thinking. And these are, these are roles or titles that we had, we had kind of been circling around or honed in on in the past. But I think some of the data that you were able to, you know, put on this sheet and gather points to other districts similarly thinking these titles or roles are above and beyond a stereotypical ESE teacher role. And they would include things like case management, if someone is quote-unquote "a case manager." And Kevin might be able to elaborate for me on that a little more as far as, you know, ESE teachers who have some cases versus a case manager, if there's differentials there. And then obviously, a lot of districts have also focused in on some of the most complex of the ESE positions or students they service, such as ASD and EBD and self-contained and things like that, which, which again are the, you know, the whole, the whole aspect of ESE educator is a difficult one. And above and beyond what a typical classroom teacher would probably have to handle. But then within the sphere, we personally have always viewed that working with these even more complex difficulties, such as ASD and EBD, should come with some extra compensation. And we see that in the form of some districts like Duval and Orange, providing targeted supplements for people who are willing to take and stay in those positions. That's something also that Kevin might be able to weigh in on is that, you know, turnover in education is big to begin with, and ESE, it's even bigger. And then when you drill down from what we've seen or what we believe, you know, turnover in those tougher ESE positions similarly escalates because it just, you know, it can be overwhelming if that's not exactly the passion that you want to pursue. No, no one's going to stay in those types of environments with the difficulty and the complexity of the work if they don't want to be there. So to fill those vacancies or to lower the attrition and turnover, which is to the benefit of the students, obviously, some extra incentive would seem like the only option because it's not like you can make the job that much easier. It is inherently a very complex, difficult job for the teachers who stick with it. So just some thoughts.
Thank you. I can go ahead and comment to some of that, just as part of discussion. The case manager role, we often see at the secondary level, middle and high school, that case manager often receives that role when they're a support facilitator. And in any of the principals, Mr. Thomas, please chime in at any time. Those teachers not only provide services, but they also provide additional case management to make sure that the data is continuously being collected and also the information is included in, I'm going to call it the drafted IEP when it's time for the coordinator to bring everybody together and meet with the formalized IEP team. So to your point, Justin, yes, it is a significant amount of additional work. And of course, the ESE contacts or coordinators, they are also a critical role in that to make sure, one, that services are supporting the principal and administration, make sure all services are provided, and that we have that extra layer of monitoring, that we have the data and information we need to write a compliant IEP. The ASD IND, EBD, so defined as our self-contained programs, this is something that we've been talking about for years. And I know going way back even with CTA and talking about the vacancy rates, what we can do to be able to support this group. I have consistently said to anybody, even in our CTA ESE meetings that we've had over the years, this, this group of teachers, although they do have a smaller student caseload, the intensity of their role is just so much more when it comes to lesson planning, preparing IEPs, providing direct services pretty much throughout the day. And those services include all subjects, so their prep time has also increased. So that in itself are above and beyond the typical classroom teacher that, that we would refer to within the bargaining unit. Does that help?
Yeah, and I guess I had a follow-up question. I'm pretty positive I know the answer, but I just want to confirm it kind of for, for the purposes of our discussion and what might become negotiations as a consequence of what we, what we do here. You know, obviously, as it relates to the school district and the school district performance and the district grade and school grades, you know, students, how the students who are in some of these self-contained classes, or all of them, you know, they, their education and the quality of education they receive and their results or their scores directly influence school grade and district grade at this point in time, correct?
Yes, sir. It's probably, I'm going to estimate, seven, eight years ago, when the state formally ensured that students on access points, so some of our kids within the autism spectrum, all of our kids within the category of intellectual disabilities. Historically, yes, they didn't count prior to the state coming forward and saying, "All kids count." At that time is when we, and we've been working on it prior to that, but we made sure they had all updated curriculum, that we weren't just putting them on a computer program all day and them getting the same thing over and over annually, and really getting curriculum to teach to the standard. Because to your point, those standards are going to be assessed on the Florida Alternative Assessment. So yes, that is correct. It's critical for these kids to be able to perform and achieve, both for them, for themselves, for their school grade, and for the overall district grade.
Thank you, Kevin. So that's definitely something I wanted to, you know, a sad reality that we have to pay attention to school grades and school district grades, whether we agree with the measurement systems or the state's interpretation of success or achievement or growth. But it is a reality, and it affects the school district and the teachers who come and work for the school district, parents who choose to relocate, move to Palm Beach County and go into our schools with their students. So we just wanted to put that out there, that it is a reality to pay mind to the fact that in reviewing school grades and the school district grade from the past year, that, you know, CTA has, has kind of come to the conclusion that there are opportunities to gain success in these classrooms with these students, which not only benefits them directly, obviously, but then in turn benefits the district and the perception of the district and the reality of how our residents view our services to their students, you know. So we just, we don't want to make that a focal point, but at the same time, we do want to make sure that that is a piece of our discussion because keeping teachers in these positions, lowering attrition, rewarding them for a difficult job above and beyond the average instructional personnel, you know, the benefits are not just the teacher makes some more money. The benefits are to the direct student service, to the district as a whole and our performance. So we just wanted to highlight that and make sure that was part of the discussion because the implications aren't just, you know, they're doing a tough job, they deserve some more money. It's far more complex than that. So thank you for your responses.
Yeah, and if you don't mind me adding to it, based on what you said, of course, there's a student achievement aspect, which helps grading, but there's also the financial aspect of what these students bring in. And to the credit of our ASD teachers and our principals, that house our ASD programming. We've got a good reputation nationally and some internationally. We've got families coming here from all over, and not to say that our school system is the only draw, but when they look at options, when they're looking at South Florida, a lot of families are coming here because of the programs that we're offering and the reputation that they've established for themselves over the years. That being said, the ASD program continues to grow year after year over the IND and EBD. But IND and EBD stay stable and should be staying stable from my perspective as far as student attrition and how we're providing and the number of programs that we're providing throughout the district. That being said, they pull in what we call weighted FTE. So these, these students, based on their level of services and their IEPs, draw more money. Based in the more intense the services, the more we're providing, the more weighted funding we get through state funding. So that's also part of the conversation.
Thank you, Kevin. So those are kind of our initial CTA thoughts and reflections, just based on a first blush look at the data. And thank you, Lori, for, for reaching out and putting in the effort to cobble this together from across the state so we can kind of compare ourselves to our peers and see what they're doing so we can compete, you know, and attract and retain the people who we desperately need in these hard-to-find positions.
So just one more comment based on vacancies. We're doing better with vacancies now as we're, I think, attracting more teachers. We're becoming more competitive with our surrounding counties. Just my caution, and I say it whenever I get the opportunity, is if we go in the other direction, we're going to be in trouble because it's almost like a pay now or pay more later scenario because we're required to provide free, appropriate public education as a public school system. And it's important to be able to make sure that we're providing all services to all students. And the major area that I see, and based on looking at this, we're doing well and we're competitive. Our speech and language pathologist, that's our largest vacancy rate for a specific position. But you also look at what we're paying, and we're either at or above all of our other peers around us and throughout the state. So I truly attribute our vacancy rate to just a national shortage because, you know, with that specific group, we are very competitive, if not leading the pack with how we're compensating that group of staff. The others, I think, where, you know, that's where the conversation would need to go deeper.
Does anybody else want to weigh in on the district side? Okay, are we then, could we create a breakout room to caucus, to touch base with our members? Thank you very much, Jermaine. Hey Caitlin, you can convey to them that we're ready anytime they are, depending on what they're, they're up to. And obviously if they're discussing things, we're happy to wait.
Hello, looks like I'm the only one that made it back.
Hi, I think everyone is back. Yes, everyone is back.
Okay.
Hi guys, I'm just saying hi. I just popped in to see who she's meeting with. Hi.
Hey Rachel.
We appreciate the time to caucus. We just wanted to make sure we, we kind of discussed some of what Kevin was able to provide us and some insights from the, the management side of things. So I know we have another session scheduled that it's likely to be our final session because this was, we typically do two or three and this will be three, the next one. So we just kind of want to circle back to and summarize what we talked about earlier and then also some additional things that we talked about in, in our caucus a little bit. You know, the, the attention necessary to these self-contained classes and the, and the various anachronism positions that are, that are high difficulty, high to staff, high turnover, et cetera. Looking at the comparables from the other districts. You know, the, the impact on our students, the impact on our district. Another point that was brought up was, is also the impact on the employees in some of these positions. These are, are not just rigorous positions because of the level of difficulty of providing an education specialized and tailored to students who have very particular needs, but also there is, you know, and it's documented. And if you ask anybody who works in these self-contained classrooms, there is, is a degree of safety and, and physical concern that also goes along with these jobs as it relates to the teachers. So that's another aspect of why we feel that, you know, I don't, I don't want to call it hazard pay, but they are in a, in a position that does lead to a higher frequency of potential injuries or strikes against the teachers, many of whom are, you know, they're not, not that anybody couldn't get injured, but these aren't a bunch of 200 and 250 pound people in these classrooms. Some of these teachers are 100 pounds, 120 pound teachers. So a kid can do a lot of damage and that's something that has led to some of the attrition from members that we've spoken to. So we wanted to highlight that as well that, you know, any additional compensation related to the degree of difficulty isn't just academic difficulty. It also involves a position that sees a disproportionate amount of potential physical injury or safety concerns as well. That came up in our conversations. Another thing that came up was the, there's some references in some of these other districts to the additional days of compensation or duty days as it relates to doing case manager work or excessive paperwork for people who have special titles or special designations in some of these ESE positions. You know, as much as we want to make sure that they're, they're compensated, you know, to, to their work and the commensurate to the difficulty and what they do. No amount of compensation can, can buy you more time. So in some situations, we see these districts are tying. You get some extra compensation because we're giving you the authorization to do some extra time of work. We discussed in our caucus about, you know, what would that look like? We don't know exactly. Maybe that's a question. I don't know if Lori, we could ask her to find out these extra days of compensation for case managers or other designations on this sheet that are identified. Are you able to ask follow-up questions to those districts to ask them how they handle that? Is that extra duty days at different points in the year, which, which, you know, theoretically might mean like Saturdays? Or is this something where it was brought up in our caucus by Hazel that, you know, many of the platforms for completing some of the paperwork for ESE students, fortunately is done through online software that can clock and log your time and your activity. So, you know, if, if you wanted to do the extra work on a Monday night from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, you could log those three hours and that could lead to a day's worth or two extra days' worth of compensation for the, the workload that you can't complete during the duty day. So we just wanted to find out what those extra days look like in reality versus just you get paid for two extra days of work to do more work. That was a question that came up that we didn't have an answer to and we definitely think would better inform the possibility of looking at that as an option. How would extra days, you know, present themselves to the teachers who might become eligible?
Absolutely.
So thank you for that Lori.
Just a quick comment to that, Justin, if you don't mind. We have the ability to monitor usage in EdPlan. If that, if we need hard data, we can, we can get that data if needed. And the only other thing is the, and I know we're not going to use it, but the injury and hazard to the job, I'm, I'm sure David and his colleagues at Royal Palm School could speak to that significantly. That is something we consistently work with our risk management department on and make sure we have the proper, you know, gear and safety equipment to be able to try to keep staff as safe as possible based on that.
Understood. Thank you, Kevin. So, you know, our goal is kind of, as we said at the onset of this meeting, was to try to kind of focus more specifically on the, the duties or the job titles that are just kind of exceptionally exceptional within the ESC profession. And that's what we're trying to, to do by looking more specifically at the duties and, and the difficulty level and the, and the turnover and attrition rate. So, you know, we'd, we'd love to hear any thoughts from the, the district side on this. I know we're not here to negotiate, but we certainly would like, you know, either now or at the next meeting to get a feeling for whether or not, you know, the things we're saying. And Kevin, to some degree, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but has, has kind of alluded to the fact that, you know, he, he sees some of the things we're saying as well. As possibly meritus of, of some consideration and extra compensation or extra work time or duty days. But we'd love to know prior to going into negotiation. I know the, my perception of the point of these committees is definitely if we find common ground to, to walk into negotiations shoulder to shoulder with a concept that both sides see merit in and then negotiate the fine details. And, and we'd kind of like to, to hopefully by the conclusion of next meeting, have a, an idea that there is some common ground between us so that neither side goes in with something wholly unexpected. You know, that the other side hasn't contemplated, you know, so that just a, a thought about what could come in the next meeting as far as coming together if there's the possibility of some common belief that, that things we're saying or anything you want to contribute that your side thinks needs to be done can be discussed before those negotiations. But we do appreciate everybody's time and everyone's support. We know everyone knows that this is an, an area of need as evidenced by the fact that all these districts do have supplements and special considerations for teachers. Any other position in, in, you know, instructional personnel, you don't see seven, eight, nine, 10 different supplements or considerations for time for a, a standard instructional classroom teacher, but for ESC, you do see a, a wide range of concerns that have led to consideration for time and compensation and things like that. So we appreciate everybody's time today.
Justin, the only other thing I'd like to mention and, and depending on where this goes, because there's other ways that what I'm about to say impacts the current bargaining is we have teachers that are in ESE positions that in function aren't doing that work. So, and that happens more at the secondary level, middle and high school. Definitely not at the elementary school because they don't have enough at that level. But just kind of throwing it out there. So if it's brought up in the future, it's, it's not foreign to you. And I know I'm bringing on kind of more responsibility for my shop, but if there's a way for us to be able to verify, and I'm just going to bring up the $1,000 that they get now, but to verify that their function is actually not just their job code, but their function is providing ESC services. I think that's important both fiscally for us as a system, but also to truly respect those that are doing that job and make sure they're the ones that get compensated for it. And not just those that are, you know, in the VE position, but teaching civics all day or advanced biology all day. So just a, a comment I want to put out there, just so it's not foreign to you all if I bring it up in the future.
Understood, understood. We, we would, we would welcome any data that, that better displays those who are eligible, should be eligible, maybe should not be eligible. That, that is a, a fair question. So we, we see no, no problem in, in looking into data to better understand the populations that we're discussing.
It also helps me and us focus on using staff to truly focus on student achievement because the more teachers allocated to truly support these students, the better outcomes we're going to get.
Understood. Okay. I think that, that might be it from our side unless there's anyone else on CTA's team have anything to, to add in conclusion for today?
All right. Is there anything for the management side? Okay. Well, I love holding these meetings because I feel like we really get the opportunity to have some conversation back and forth and really get a good understanding of where everybody is. to have some conversation back and forth and really get a good understanding of where everybody is. I appreciate your time and your dedication to this work. And we look forward to seeing everybody at our next session, which I think is May 23rd. Give me a thumbs up, Caitlin. Yes, thumbs up. I got it. All right, May 23rd, we'll see you all then virtually and everyone have a great day. Thank you.